Good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, May the ninth, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is in the territories of the Shishil and Squamish Nations. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes, errors, omissions? Would somebody like to move the agenda? Moved, seconded, all in favor. That passes. Next up, we have no presentations and delegations. Could I see a motion to receive all reports and communication? Moved, seconded, all in favor. Thank you. And then the first item up is our water supply update. Over to GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to slide to share my presentation with you. Okay, this is the May ninth's water supply update, and this is a picture actually from Chapman Lake at the start of the month when the warm weather wasn't there yet, but more on that later. So on April 30, staff went up and did a snow survey, and these are the results. On average, were about, for Chapman Lake, 30% lower than normal, but you can see that in 2019 and 2020, that was also the case. It should be noted that 2019 and 2020 were two years that we did not went to stage four, while in the other years, 2018, 2021, 2022, and 2023, we went to stage four. So that clearly indicates that snowpack is not the only driver for going for for stages, I think. Last year, last month, in April, we were about 40% lower than normal, and the fact that we're now at 30% is really the result of the cooler weather we had in April. We had a little bit more snow up there and a little bit less snow melt. This was the picture. Same same trend for Atros Lake, still about 30% lower than average, but again, more or less comparable with 2019 and 2018, 2020. This is the Environment Canada Weather Forecast for April 30, and the redder, the more red, the more deep red, the higher the percentage that the temperatures are above normal. Eastern Canada is very clear. Western Canada, definitely on the coast, is also deep red. We're at the bottom of that lobe, which you can see there, but there's a significant chance that we have warmer forecast for the upcoming, warmer chance, higher likelihood of warmer weather in upcoming three months, which will, of course, impact the snow melt. So as part of bylaw, all of the water systems are in stage one as of May 1, and given the weather forecast, I would say that severe drought conditions are plausible, very plausible this summer. We're not alone in this. Our snowpack is definitely comparable with the rest of BC, which averages about 30, 35, 40% below below normal, and the province is taking this really seriously as well, not only because of the water supply situation, but also on the impacts it might have on the wildfire situation over the summer. So they really updated their provincial drought website, and this is the snow index map from early, from May 1, and you can see that there is one area that has a little bit of green in it, and the rest is brown, orange, or red, which means not good. So we are in the, we're luckily enough out of the red zone at the moment, but Vancouver Island is not. So what is outlook for the Chapman system? As indicated, the timing of stage two is really dependent on the temperature and precipitation in upcoming weeks. At the moment, it's definitely warmer than normal. I think we're all enjoying the warm weather, but it's also resulting in, of course, an increased rate of snow melt. There's no rain in the forecast, no substantial amount in the upcoming week, so yeah, time will tell when when we have to call stage two. As indicated before, Chapman Church Road is for the operational. We're still working with Shishil Nation and the province to confirm the plan to reduce the EFN for Chapman Creek this summer. We haven't had a resolution there yet. The primary discussions are currently happening between the SAD and the Shishil Nation there, and the province is waiting the outcome for those conversations before they can make a decision. Similar situation is with the siphons. We have approval to keep the siphons in until late summer, but if we have an extended drought, we need further approval from both the nation and the province to do so. South Pender. South Pender is, of course, is becoming a more regular item in these presentations as well as compared to several years ago. I thought I'll explain that the primary concern for South Pender is the daily use, and we have a maximum diversion rate on a daily basis for that system, which is included in a water license, and the primary concern is because of the higher use and leaks in the system, the daily use will can exceed that maximum allowable diversion rate. We still have to confirm if it's actually feasible and desirable to open a discussion with the province on a water license to amend it to ask for a higher diversion rate. The comparison can be drawn from 2015 in, for the Chapman system. The SAD sought approval to install a siphon system at Chapman Lake at that time, and they were granted and to allow for another million liters of water to be drawn from Chapman Lake, and at that time, the province also installed, initiated the discussions about the EFN, and that's a similar situation I can foresee with South Pender, that we might ask for a higher diversion rate, but at the same time, we get an EFN requirement, which we currently don't have for Haslam Creek, and so we have to be really aware of before we ask for a water license amendment if we feel that is a desirable discussion to have with the province, because once we have opened the door, I think it will be hard to shut it. The secondary concern there is our water availability in McNeil Lake and Harris Lake. Last year, we confirmed that there is no technical limitations in getting water from McNeil Lake, from Harris Lake into McNeil. Harris Lake is the upper lake, and McNeil Lake is, of course, the lake where we draw the water from. When I say technical limitations, I mean, last year, by just staff and a shovel, we were able to get all the water out that we needed to get out. There was no limitations there. Is it ideal? Not. Is it possible? Yes. Is there any concern that it is a limitation this year? Not. If it's really, if it's really getting there, we just can, we always have the ability to bring in pumps, because we're not limited thereby that there is a provincial park or anything. 2020, 2023 was also the lowest lake level we had on McNeil Lake since we actually moved our intake for our treatment system from Haslam Lake to the new treatment plant that was built in 2014, and we have not clearly defined what our critical lake level is. We don't know exactly how low we can draw McNeil Lake before our intake is is causing issues. So the budget that the board approved early this year was A, to do an assessment if there, what the benefit could be from amending our license, if, let's say, there is a ton of water, ton of gain to be made there, but there, we might want to accept that there is an EFN put in place as well, or not. So that's one component of the project, and the other component is to determine the critical lake level that we can draw the lake down to for McNeil Lake. But this project is slated to be started later this year and to be completed in 2025. Over to communications. I hope all of you received this flyer in your email box. You, most likely, you had. On the other side was the conservation charts, just with all the stages. So this is the primary campaign that we started, that we launched several weeks ago to get ready for summer campaign, and in that, we included a target per person per day for residents on the coast of 200 liters a second, 200 liters per person per day. More on that later. So in April, we sent this mail out to all the 11,000 SAD customers on all our systems. We sent 230-ish letters to high-water users on the Chapman and South Pender system, and when I say high-water users, they are high-water users, really high, and a lot of them got back to us, and we're now in conversations with them about, hey, what might have caused that high-water use last year, because this is based on the data from August last year. We still are getting more subscriptions on our monthly water use update, and residents are, continue to be encouraged to to sign up. Just go to the website, sad.ch/wateruse. We are going to send a letter to all users of the South Pender Harbour Water System, explaining what I just explained about what the diversion rate and the lake levels, et cetera, as well as encourage them to really be mindful of their daily use, because it's primary, especially the calling of stage two, will be usually totally dependent on us exceeding our maximum diversion rate, and not as much on the lake level. There are still some, it's not a lot, but there's still some rainwater rebate funds available for people within the regional water service. The budget for North and South Pender have been fully allocated. So the message to the community is really, take what you need and use everything you take. Don't don't waste any water when it's hot and dry outside, and the target of 200 liters a second, 200 liters per day is per person is very, very reasonable, very doable, and meeting it all year round, and I think a lot of people on the coast are doing it, but there are still people that are using way over, way over 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 liters a day in the summer. And this graph here on the right provides an indication of how much water an activity is using. For example, a low-flow shower, a low-flow toilet per flush is about seven liters, but a top-loading washing machine can even, can even actually do 180, 180 liters a load. So that's an enormous amount of water compared to a front loader, which is way more water efficient. So this just gives an indication of where people can save water and how much water actually one activity, activity like washing a load of clothes can cost, and the bar that is almost exceeding the page, by the way, is an hour of running an irrigation system for your lawn, which is over 950 liters per day. So that's where the, that's where the big, the high use from some residents are coming from. And the other day, I heard, overheard a conversation that about 200 liters a day, how much is it actually? You have to imagine that you have every day, you have to carry 200 liters, 200-liter bottles of water in your shopping cart and go do that every day. That's that's the amount. It's a lot. It doesn't actually fit in one shopping cart. So this is a quote I recently overheard between two people, and I thought I'll put it in here. It's a lot. It should be enough, especially when it's hot and dry out there. Our communication approach this summer, we had the practice of, in this water supply update presentation, to also include a lot of updates on water supply projects, and moving forward, we're going to separate the two a little bit more. These presentations will be primarily focused on drought response, and there will be definitely an increased communication on the project itself. We're going to do monthly news releases timed more or less at the same time as this present, this update is provided to the board. The first will be up there, released early next week. There will be a map produced. We hope to get it online in upcoming weeks with all our water supplier projects, so and people can click on the project, on the location of the project, and there will be a one-pager popping up with the most relevant information on those projects, a short description, what are the costs, what's, what is the potential yield, what's the status, and what are next steps, where are the dependencies on, for example, approvals, et cetera. Of course, a lot of these projects already have let's-talk pages with a lot of information, and we will highlight a lot of these water supply projects in our social media and ads in newspapers. Another program that we're already running for several years, but that is, we really, I think, are more, even more than last several years paying attention to is the resolution of leaks. It will be a priority for staff this summer, and the approach we take is we send leak notification letters, depending on where we are at the year, it can be one or two. We usually provide a lot of support to residents, because the first response from somebody that's receiving a leak notification letter usually is call the SAD about what's going on. We provide a lot of support. There's a lot of support also on the website, sad.ch/fixleak. If, after a certain period of time, the leak is still unresolved, we will send, it's not a May, May, we will send a shut-off notice, and the water will be shut off if the leak is not fixed at some date. And several weeks ago, we sent, in April, we sent about 300 leak notification letters, and this morning, we sent, we're sending 281 leak notification letters to the most, to the highest leaks that we currently have in the system, and they're both residential and commercial. And somehow, it dropped on the slides, but we recently, last several weeks, we issued nine notification, shut-off notifications. Five of them are currently resolved, resulting in, I think, 97,000 liters per day savings. Four are still outstanding. I issued a shut-off notification yesterday for a leak of 150,000 liters that was recently found during the last meter reads, and of course, that that one, given its size, has very, very short turnaround time for them to fix the leak. So that's one of the four that's still outstanding. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And for residents, a lot of information is, of course, also available on our website, sad.ch/water updates. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking to my fellow directors for questions. Director Ingster.
Thank you, Chair. As Director McMahon would say over in this area, I have lots of questions. I just want to start with the first one, and some of this is just, bear with me, Chair, some of it's just reiteration of some information that was presented so that if it goes out through the media and or through the public, that it's it's known very clearly. So a couple of questions are just reiterations, just through you to Mr. Rosenbaum. So you said in your presentation that snowpack does not necessarily mean stage four. You're nodding, but so I'll just try to extract a little more. Sure.
Point of order.
Questions go through the chair, please.
Okay, well, I've seen that before, but I'll look this way. I've seen that, I've seen that lots, actually, amongst the directors. I'm really surprised with the reaction. Anyway, this is an important topic. So I'm trying to glean then, because I have to go through the chair, through to staff, if, in fact, if they can speak more to that issue about that, because publics thinks that because we have low snowpack, that there's going to be no water. I keep hearing that, no water, and I'll give the second question then to the, we're still waiting on the province for the EFN. If if we can add a little more information, if that's quite annually that we keep waiting for the province to give us EFN permission, because people still, they think that we permit EFN, this is what I'm hearing, that we're the permiters of the EFN. They don't seem to know that it's the province, and the province and their partners, I guess, to permit it, and if staff could also say what the EFN is, just break the acronym down for the public, and those are my first two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Ingster, over to staff for a rainwater-dependent system, and what is EFN?
Thank you very much. As outlined in my presentation, and also indicated in an earlier water supply data provided to the board, the SAD, the primary Chapman water system is a rain-dependent system. Snow belt, snowpack is determining, is a big factor in determining when we have to call stage two. After, once called, stage two is called, and the water is After, once the call to stage two is called, and uh, the water is not, no longer overflowing the dams at Chapman Lake and Edwards Lake, then we're totally dependent on the amount of rain uh for when we have to, and of course, the, the demand by the community, uh, when we have to call stage three and stage four. So in 2019 and 2020, uh, we had comparable snowpacks. And uh, later this year, we had sufficient amount of rain to prevent us from going to stage four. Stage three was called, stage four not. In the other years, we had bigger snowpacks. Um, but ultimately, I think 2022 was a prime example of the, the uh, this. We had a very substantial snowpack, far above normal. It was only late July that we had to call stage two because of that. But ultimately, I think everybody knows that we ended to, ended up in the longest stage four we ever had. So uh, that's uh, that uh, you know, that's related to the um, the disconnect between stage four and um, and snowpack. EFN is the environmental flow need, which is the minimum amount of flow that we have to maintain in Chapman Creek. Um, and it's condition of a water license with the province. The water license, while I say the water license with the province, I have to say that the water license of the province, given the shared decision-making model on water licenses and um, how the, how provincial approvals are currently provided, is primarily also dependent on support from the Shishet Nation. And we currently, uh, last year, we received approval from the province to um, implement the EFN. We received it about the same time that the, that the fall rain started, so we'd never actually used it. Um, that included all kind of requirements for us to develop all kinds of plans and do additional monitoring, uh, which we would not had uh the ability at that time to even implement if the weather would have been uh um, dry, because those requirements were uh way too cumbersome. So we are currently in discussions with the province, as well as Shishet Nation, to confirm what we can do this year. And we've started that conversation last year. Uh, we continued that conversation uh from last fall. We never stopped, but we haven't had a resolution yet. Um, so the first step is that we're currently waiting for is confirmation from the province on, if on a technical side, we, they're okay with our approach for this year. And we need the confirmation from the, uh, we need support from Shishet Nation on that as well. And um, we don't have that yet.
Thank you very much for that thorough explanation. Director White.
Yeah, that was thorough, and maybe there's nothing to add, but um, it's still elusive to me that we did get approval late last year, and we did get agreement. I'm not saying you, that's a big difference. Um, we did get agreement, I can look, I'll, I'll look over here, I can look wherever I want. So, sorry, I was interrupted. Um, we did get agreement from the nation, we were working together with the nation on this co-monitoring. That was approved by the province. And why is it so hard, I mean, what, what's changed? Why, why is it so hard not just to build on that, that they, they, they did approve it? They approved the plan, um, the nation had agreed to it. The, the, I think the co-monitoring arrangement was really promising, and it seemed to be something that the, the province looked positively on and, and approved. Um, and now we've even put funds into it. Um, why, why is there suddenly an obstacle now, when this was just approved? In just this last fall.
Over to staff, why are we back to the beginning?
Thank you very much. Last year, we received approval, the support from the Shishet Nation to um, amend the EFN for um, for a short period at last, uh, last year. There was a short-term uh support from the nation. The approval we ultimately received from the province, received all kind of requirements that we didn't expect. We needed to develop an environment monitor, and uh, way more extended monitoring plan and adaptive management plan, and we had to install gauges, et cetera, et cetera. The budget, um, early this year, it's part of the budget process. The board approved budget process, uh, uh, budget to actually develop those plans. And it was uh, and to do the monitoring, which is, I think, a $500,000 budget to develop the plans uh required and to do the monitoring and to install the additional um, flow monitoring gauges in Chapman Creek. That work is ongoing, RFP and uh tender process is, is being initiated uh to develop those plans. Because those plans are based on additional monitoring data that we need to collect, and we haven't collected those main monitoring data yet. So while we had the support from the nation last year as for an emergency reduction in the event late summer, um, the requirements we subsequently received from the province in order to do so were such that uh, we are in a way, in a sense, we went backwards because we had to do more work to even to, before we could move a step forward. So the discussions we're having now with the province and the nation is, given that it will take us not, at least not a year before we can get those plans in place, what can we do this year? So hence, we're back to ongoing discussions about what we can do. And I see that our CEO uh is willing to add something to this.
Thank you very much for flagging that. Mr. McKinley.
Yes, thank you, just to, to maybe add one or two things to what GM Rosenbaum was saying. We did recently have an opportunity to meet with a couple of the ministers to talk about this, recognizing that there's still work and un, uh, information that needs to be gathered. But essentially, uh, working at the technical working group level and with the province and the nation to recognize that managing EFN in 2024 means working collaboratively without all of the information. We have received permission, you know, on two different occasions to manage EFN. And the other complicating factor on the permission received last year was the timing of that permission. Because by the time we received the permission to manage EFN, the fish were already in the creek, which nullified our ability to manage the EFN. And we wouldn't have had an opportunity to set up and, and do a lot of the monitoring when we were actually, we were actively managing for fish in the creek. Which is why uh, we wanted to look at managing EFN far earlier, when we're not competing with the fish, instead of far later, when there's the least amount of water in the creek.
Thank you, CAO. Uh, Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. Um, question about EFN, I really appreciate the work that staff is doing on this. There's a lot happening behind the scenes, and I'm wondering if there's a role for us as a board, advocacy role as representatives of uh, the people of the coast? Like, is there anything that we can do to push this forward?
And who from staff would like to venture an answer to that question? Our CAO.
I'll, I'll take the, the first cut at it. Um, we had hoped, uh, we had, we had hoped to have another opportunity to get all of the elected officials together to talk about this a little further, especially in light of some of the work the technical working group is doing. We haven't been able to get that meeting scheduled yet. Um, based on the weather we're getting, and, and we just had the water update, um, this is something that is probably, it's, it's becoming very time-sensitive if we're to have permission to manage EFN from the time the water stops flowing over the dam, which is hard to predict what day that is, but it could, it could be happening as early as June. Um, so there may be an opportunity for additional advocacy, but what I'm hoping is we can get all the elected officials back together to talk about this. So there's an opportunity for joint messaging going out to the province, who's actually participating on the technical working group, that uh sends a positive message about permitting EFN management this summer.
Thank you. Uh, Jim, did you have anything to add? Okay, thank you very much. Director Bax.
Thank you. A couple of uh, simple questions for staff that I think can illuminate some things for me. Um, uh, we have, the first question is, uh, we have a permission from the, the province to leave the siphons in place uh that draw water to Chapman Lake. How long is that going to go on for? And my second question is, is there a trigger point for a daily leak? Um, for um, that would trigger a, a water shut-off if they haven't repaired it? I, I see that, according to the numbers I've been given, that it seems like they're leaking about 20,000 liters a day, which is um, a hundred times what we're looking for as an average. And I was wondering if, if that's the trigger point, is it 20,000 liters, or is it, is it less than that? Thank you.
Over to staff.
Thank you. Um.
It was EFN and magic numbers for leaks.
You.
Sorry, siphons, siphons.
That was, that was it. I, I knew it, it wasn't even, it was siphons. Um, yes, for siphons. So we currently have emergency, that's what they're officially called, emergency siphon systems in place at Edwards and Chapman. For both, we have approval to keep them in place and to use them until sometime in October. The dates are different for each of the uh, the systems, but in both cases, it's October. We need to, if we want to take them out, if we need to take them out, we need a lead time, we need the contractors in place, we need uh safety plants, because we might need divers if they're still partly underwater. So we have a lead time, and we need to make a decision to take them out um sometime prior uh to that end date. So if we have an extended drought, currently, we don't have the approvals from the province, as well as the support from the nation for that approval to be issued, to keep the siphon system in place longer. So we have an extended drought, like we had in 2022, we can't use the siphons um past mid-September-ish, because then we uh really need to start taking them out, because they will take some time as well. So that is, uh, that is the situation with the siphons. With respect to leaks, um, no, the number is not 20,000, the number is lower. And then it really depends also on, um, sometimes the leak sprung and appears, we see it coming. We haven't seen it before, like the 150,000 that we're currently, uh, that I just mentioned. It was a smaller leak, and within a short timeframe, it went to a huge, humongous leak. So um, our process changed there, and we uh asked for an immediate shut-off, almost immediate shut-off uh or repair, where in other circumstances, we are a little bit, little bit more lenient, especially given that we're still in stage one. In stage four, the trigger, those considerations will be different. Then um, every more substantial leak will have to be addressed uh immediately, almost immediately, and otherwise the water will be shut off until the leak is fixed.
Thank you. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I actually don't have any questions for staff. Uh, I appreciate the updates that we get. Uh, the um, staff are very receptive to the feedback we give and what we want to see in these updates, so they're constantly evolving. Uh, one, one thing I did want to, you know, highlight, just one comment, uh, and then I'm actually going to make a recommendation. Uh, you know, that, that 150,000 liter per day leak, if we're targeting 200 liters per person, that's 750 people worth of water going into the ground every day at one property. Like, that's, that's not inconsequential to our system. Um, in the past, we've talked about our top water users, be they leaks, be they large consumers. I know we've seen a list in 2022, I don't believe we saw a list last year. Uh, I'd actually like to make a recommendation that staff bring forward a list of the top 25 water users to the next appropriate in-camera meeting.
And do I have a seconder? That is seconded. Is there any further discussion of the motion on the floor?
A question about it.
Director White.
Um, yeah, I, I don't have a word on this, but uh, speaking of, speaking of functions and who's in them, um, would this be combined for um, uh, the, the Pender Harbor functions with regional water for these top 25? Or would you have those separately as well? Because uh, I think uh, the board needs to be very concerned about the high water usage going on in Pender Harbor, which has already been flagged here.
Fair enough. The, having seen the previous list, it was for the Chapman system. Uh, I think maybe a, uh, I think that that would be the starting place. And then if we wanted to see a list for another system, that would be a different issue, but I don't know. Does staff have a, an opinion on this?
Um, at the board's desire, we can provide both for Chapman system as well as for South Pender.
Over to Director White.
I'd strongly urge the board to ask her both, because I, I mean, I, I've got a couple more questions, but I, I think we all need to be concerned about, uh, very concerned about the state of uh, of um, South Pender Harbor.
And alrighty, we're getting a bit out of order, but that's all right. Director Lee.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm not sure everybody that's got their hand up is talking to this motion, whereas I would like to talk to this motion. I do believe that uh, any, um, any of our water systems that are struggling to uh, to meet anything more than stage one, we need to be concerned about. So with that in mind, I definitely would like to see South Pender included in that report.
That sounds like an amendment.
Yes, if I could have that as an amendment.
Is the amendment seconded?
Yes, Chapman and.
Chapman and South Pender. Is there a seconder? There is a seconder. All right, I know we don't have friendly amendments, but this seemed friendly anyway. Uh, I'm gonna, if, unless there's any discussion on the amendment, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes, thank you. We now have uh, uh, an amended motion on the floor. Do we have any further discussion of the amended motion? I'm not seeing it, so I'm calling the question, all in favor? That passes, any opposed? Thank you. Now, we move back to our speakers list, Director Ingster.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just uh, one clarification and uh, one, one question. Uh, as, as I've been doing today, just because I've been hearing from the public questions, and I'm trying to relay them through to the board and staff, we're all hearing them. Uh, just a definition question through you, Chair, is siphons? I'm assuming that is an ability, siphons are utilized in order to draw shallower water at the lake or deeper water. Just as clarification through you to staff, that's one question. And the second question is, high water users, when it was mentioned earlier that there's uh, high water users, is that including industrial, agricultural, and homeowners? And, and I guess that's why the list may need to come to us, because we're not sure who they are. But when we're saying, when Mr. Rosenbaum is saying there's high water users out there, and that's a concern when we hear that, because he's mentioned it's a lot, uh, is that industrial, agricultural, and homeowners?
I'm going to, I'm going to venture that it's all users, the, the highest user list, because that would include the hospital, which understandably uses a huge amount of water. But over to staff.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. Yes, high water users include um, everything residential, commercial, institutional. Um, some of those high, for some of the responses we're getting from a high water user is, uh, yes, I have a household of 12 people. So my use is high. Good, thank you. Uh, thanks for the clarification. The other version is, uh, the other conversation one of my staff recently had with the, with the resident was, yeah, I had my daughter's volleyball team over last year's summer. Yes, why was your uh, use then 17,000 liters a day? Or in that magnitude? Oh, I also planted 200 trees that I was watering. day, or in that magnitude? Oh, I also planted 200 trees that I was watering. So that was the, so that's kind of conversation that my staff are having, yeah. So high water uses me is a wide range. Sometimes it's legit, like a household of, larger households, or commercial, sometimes commercial is definitely legit use. Not that staff don't have, then, don't take the opportunity when they have a conversation to talk about what the conservation opportunities, given that there is high use. But there is more, more to it than, with sometimes with commercial than it is with residential with a similar volume. In terms of siphons, yes, siphon systems are used to draw water from deeper levels of Chapman, of Chapman Lake and Edwards Lake without the use of pumps. That's why we have them in place.
Thank you. And I'm going next to Director White.
Was, this, this is for just general questions. I don't think Director Stamford has asked yet. I've asked before. But then Director Inkster was ahead of me anyway, I'm sure of it, for the second round.
I am happy to prioritize Director Stamford.
I think we should continue on this discussion with the water systems that we have, that we're discussing right now. I have a question about water systems outside of the SCRD system. So I'll wait.
Alright, back to Director White.
Okay, just, yeah, based on my, my questions here, I think some, some have kind of been addressed by this next, the in-camera meeting about water users should be helpful to talk more about when we're doing shut offs and things like that. I'm very concerned, like as I mentioned earlier, I'm very concerned about South Pender Harbor, because, I mean, just in, in discussion with staff and directors, I think we're at least, we at least have some confidence that the regional, Chapman regional system should be in better shape starting out this year, just because of the, the fact that Church Road is online and, and running. South Pender Harbor, I just, I, I want to confirm that we're basically, what I'm hearing is we're basically going in with the same situation we were in last year. And that, I think that should be really concerning to the board. It sounds like, I, I mean, I'm hoping with this, the, the high water usage, I mean, I heard, I heard about high water usage and staff's priority on that, and really trying to get that down in this region. I hope, I hope maybe we're finding some major leaks there that are being addressed. That, that conversation may have been mixed in with the, the regional system. But if there's any more details on that, that would be helpful. But yeah, I'm also, I'm also hearing, I mean, we're, we're not, any technical improvements to McNeil and Harris, we can't expect those until 2025. So that's concerning for this summer. Is there, is there anything else we're looking at that, that could, could help the situation if we're in a, in, in another scenario that's, that's similar to last summer or worse? And one, one thought that I know is often discussed is about drawing water from the north Pender Harbor system and the viability of that in kind of an emergency basis.
South Pender.
Thank you very much for the question. Maybe this is something that I can allude a little bit more on next time in terms of volumes, et cetera. But Harris Lake, at the end of last year, had still a lot of water still in it. So all that water was still available to be even diverted back into McNeil Lake to augment McNeil Lake. And McNeil Lake still had several feet above our intake. And as it just indicated, we don't know exactly where the critical level is because of the functioning of the intake, but there was still a lot of water still left. The primaries in last year also took all stage two, and could be this year as well. It's not the amount of water that we still have in the lakes, it's the, the daily use to get that down. And so by the residents reducing their consumption and addressing leaks, it's actually two, two objectives can be met. One, we might be able to stay in a lower stage. Two, we might leave more water in the lakes so that we actually are certain that we have enough water if we were to get an extended drought this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow up?
Thanks. Yeah, I really appreciate that answer, because it's really, especially coming from the Gibson's perspective, we know we can reduce our water, we can reduce household use, we've seen it. And touching upon that, I'm wondering about the, the relationship with, with meters in, in this area, which meters have been there for a long time. Are, and I'm wondering about the scheduling of our mock billing for South Pender Harbor and, and sharing more with, with users about how much they're using and how much that, that could cost them under a volumetric system and, and how much they could potentially reduce.
Staff, please.
Dean, CEO, I see you're, you're after end up.
Begging your pardon, I do see the CAO.
Thank you very much. I'll take the first crack at this. I would expect on the volumetric billing part of the, and you'll have to forgive me my voices feeding back, so I'm stumbling over my words a bit here. On the mock billing piece of the meters, you can expect a report coming forward probably toward the end of June that goes into more detail on volumetric billing rollout, all the steps that are involved between where we are now and where we need to get to, how long that might take, and when we can expect to see some of these, the mock billings roll out by area.
Thank you. GM, did you have anything to add, or is that sufficient? Okay. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I was happy to see the 200 liters a day per person, per day goal. I think that makes it very concrete. A little difficult, because not all of our residents actually know how much water they consume every day. Only, I think about, I think we're a bit short of 1,000 people registered for the monthly water use updates. So lots of work to do there to get people on to that, so that they know, they can track how much water they use. So if you're at home listening, please send an email to infrastructure@scrd.ca to register. But I'm wondering what, so that's a goal, like a personal goal, so every resident, 200 liters per day, per person. What would that mean if, if all residents followed that? If all residents were on 200 liters a day, what would that mean for systems? Like, is there, and, you know, I have so many questions about that, that number, like where did it come from? How did, how did staff determine that that would be the ideal one? How do we make sure that that includes visitors in the summer? Like, our population grows quite substantially in the summer. Does that, take that into consideration? So any, any information that staff could give about that number and, and what it would mean as a bigger community goal would be appreciated.
And over to staff.
200 liters a day is a number that, that is, if, that is, in one way arbitrary, we could have tuned, we could have made it 210, 190. However, it is a number that is actually above what a lot of people, let's say France, has, has severe drought situations as well, and has complete severe drought, water supply shortage in some areas. And there, I think there's even a mandatory max of 150. So 200 is still on the higher side. So it's just an arbitrary to say 200 liters a day, you should be able to do everything you want on the coast for 200 liters a day. Resident, per person, should be able to, is, 200 liters a day is more than enough to, to do what you need to do on a daily basis in a household. Doesn't mean that you can leave your sprinklers on in your lawn for two hours, but it allows you definitely to take the showers that you want, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's how the 200 liters a day was established. It's primarily a communication goal, a target. Let's all focus on that. And what it will do to the system, if we have 10,000, 11,000 connections, then 200, it will reduce our demand a lot. And it could actually really make a difference in us going to higher, higher stages later in the summer if we have an extended drought.
Follow up?
And follow up on that, could, could staff say anything about our population growing in the summer and how, like, are we able to calculate? Do we have numbers and how many people, like, how, how much of a handle do we have on tourism and visitors, like family members coming to the coast to visit? I mean, you know, I, I get guests all the time and, but it, does that 200, you know, how does that play into that 200 liters a day? Or how much, like, how could we get better information about the impacts that visitors have on our system?
And, and I'm going to jump in there for a minute, because I remember having this conversation 10 years ago, when we were trying to find a way to calculate the number of, of seasonal visitors on the coast. It's incredibly difficult. There's, there's been attempts to calculate according to B C ferries traffic, or according to all kinds of different things. And as far as I know, nobody has come up with a really good way to, to estimate. But maybe GM Rosenbaum has come up with the magic solution.
Sorry, I'm still failing for my magician license. No, it's still, it, it is, it is still a big question. What we do know is there, of course, are people coming to the coast and there are people not in attendance. Let's say a May long weekend, yes, people coming here, but there are also people leaving. And what the ultimate balance of that is, and how that's actually impacting water supply is always hard to tell. What we do know is when we look at the water data, actually the water community demand on those long weekends, we don't see a significant spike. It's sometimes because just on the long weekend, the temperatures may be a little bit lower, but even if the temperature's higher, it's not that much of a difference. The exemption, well, yeah, no, I, I think I'll leave it there. It's, we've, we looked at data, we looked at, to see if we can find a correlation between a long weekend and high water use. And we have not able to find it based on the total demand for the community. So it definitely will make a difference on, for certain properties. But overall, it's not, because it could be that residents are using more water, but maybe the commercial operator is closed during the long weekend. So.
Thank you. And I'm just, on, on high water use, I'm feel, I feel that I'm going to just point out, I believe the latest average for April for residential water use was about 420 liters a household, right? We have an average on the coast of 2.1 persons per household, so that actually works out very well on that. And my two-person household has never exceeded 400 liters, even when we were watering our vegetable garden, not against restrictions, during the correct time. But I think it's more than achievable. I think it's a, it's a generous goal. Director Stamford, we're finally at you.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, the board toured Paper Excellence Pulp Mill in Houssound, and there was a brief mention of the water challenges that they are beginning to experience. My question is whether or not the regional district has any coordinating role or factors in the Houssound Pulp Mill and their water usage. And if they are potentially looking for other water sources, how does the SCRD participate in that?
What a fun question. It's a new question. Over to staff.
Thank you. The water supply from the, for the, for the mill is coming from, this is historical knowledge, you should have noticed, from several lakes, and they got dams and they have licenses on those dams. And I'm drawing here from knowledge from seven years ago when I was still with the Rowans, sorry. But we are not connected to them. There is, our water main stops in Langdill, so there is no connection between us and the mill. In terms of our involvement in anything they do, of course, we would most likely receive a referral if they would apply for any amendments or new water licenses. We would just receive a referral as a, as a, as a relevant agency from the province. But that would be more or less our involvement in any of their, their attempts to improve the water supply situation.
Thank you. And it, it is sobering to know that even the Rainy River is, is having seasonal drought problems these days. So I'm not seeing any further hands up. And under those circumstances, I think we can move to the next item on our agenda, which is the letter of support from the Connect the Coast Society Community Services. GM Ganion.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have an introduction to the report. I think it speaks for itself, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any questions on this very straightforward set of recommendations on page three? Director White.
Very straightforward. I move the recommendation.
And I see a seconder. Any further conversations? A question from Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on page, on the, the attachment, which is on page seven, talks about Modi not, not having responded to the preliminary design report. I'm just wondering if Modi has responded at this point?
Over to staff.
Thank you, through the chair. Probably not a question that I can answer. That would be something that TRAC would be able to respond to. And I'm sure that I could find the answer and forward it to if you'd like it another time. Thank you.
If it's a yes or no, does TRAC have a yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Alright, that sounds like a future discussion, and it should be interesting. Motion is on the floor. I'm going to call it. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is, yes, provincial wildfire deployment. Very interesting report, I want to say. I really enjoyed it. So, over to GM Hall and Chief Michael.
Thank you, Chair. I have Gibson's and District Volunteer Fire Department Chief Michael with us today, who can offer a little bit of supporting detail with some slides that he's just booting up. As a brief intro, I just wanted to note sort of why, why this topic is on your agenda. Maybe, maybe obvious if you've been following the fire situation in the province, and we just heard about drought conditions from our General Manager of Infrastructure. So as you know, our volunteer fire departments are requested by the province to deploy in support of provincial wildfire protection efforts. And this is impactful work. It's increasingly frequent as we, as we face climate change throughout the province. And I want to acknowledge that it's mostly conducted by volunteers from the Sunshine Coast. And with that, I'll, if it pleases the chair, we have a, just- And with that, I'll, if it pleases the chair, we have just a few slides to illustrate the report.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to share my screen.
And it's working.
Excellent. So requests for structural fire department resources are typically made during states of local emergency when communities and critical infrastructure are threatened. The S C R D has provided support to the province with personnel and equipment dating back to 2003, but on an increasingly frequent basis. It should be noted that the same process would be utilized to bring additional resources to our region if required. When it looks like a wildfire may impact a community, B.C. Wildfire Service will deploy a structured protection specialist to assist the local jurisdiction with structured defense planning. As part of this structured defense planning, it may be determined that additional resources are needed. Deployment, uh, resources can be broken down into two separate functions, structure depend, uh, protection and structured defense. Structure protection requests can be for a crew, five personnel and two pickup trucks, or for a structure protection trailer. Currently, the Sunshine Coast has a structure protection trailer in the care and custody of Seashell Fire, uh, that is not deployed off coast. Additionally, the S C R D has a quarter of a trailer through grant funding with plans to have this complete and fully in service by 2026, and also not planned to be off coast. Resource requests for structured defense operations can include chief officers, structural engines, wildland engines, and water tenders. Here's just a, a little bit of a list over the last number of years of deployments that the S C R D fire departments have participated in. And you can see, you know, a couple in 2003 with a large gap, um, beginning again in 2017, and on an increasingly frequent basis from there. Preseason training starts with early and ongoing engagement with B.C. Wildfire Service. It's also worth noting that a substantial portion of this training curriculum is provided by B.C. Wildfire Service at no charge. A significant number of structural firefighters on the Sunshine Coast participate in this training program and are available for deployment and local wildfire response. Each spring, Sunshine Coast Fire Chiefs prepare a list of apparatus and personnel that may be available for deployment from the province. Requests by the province for deployed resources can be, and often are short notice, received late at night and on weekends. When this happens, the local fire chief responding to the request will engage other local fire departments to ensure adequate coverage remains to address any fires or emergency events at home before we commit resources elsewhere. When a request for support is received, local fire chiefs discuss the local impact before responding. The automatic and mutual aid agreements are a critical tool that is utilized year-round to ensure the Sunshine Coast has sufficient resources available for fire suppression and emergency response. So at this point, I think it's pretty safe to say that our local region, uh, remains our priority when these resource requests come in. And, you know, myself, I have a level of anxiety even going in for a hockey game when, uh, leaving the coast and leaving my area with, uh, less resources. The S C R D is reimbursed for participating in out-of-jurisdiction response in accordance with the Fire Chiefs Association of B.C. and B.C. Wildfire Service Interagency Agreement. This document, it is updated annually based upon learnings and challenges from previous seasons, and, uh, I participate in that review process with the Fire Chiefs Association, so I hope that brings some comfort to the board as well. With the annual review of the interagency agreement, reimbursement rates are evaluated to ensure local governments are not financially supporting, uh, supplementing wildfire response, which remains the responsibility of the province. The local fire departments strive to communicate the good work of local firefighters battling wildfires while balancing the concern of equipment and personnel being deployed elsewhere. The training and experience these members receive while on deployment brings value and expertise to our local community. Fire department members return better prepared to perform these tasks at home, and this has also proven to be a positive morale and team-building experience for our crews. Beyond what is stated above, local firefighters are gaining a reputation through the province for the proficiency and expertise in wildfire response. Deployed crews are also learning the value of First Nation relationships, that they've been directly involved in the protection of critical, critically, um, cultural, significant assets on multiple deployments and recognized for these efforts. And what I've attached here are a couple of, uh, some feedback. One from a crew member from Gibson's, um, who, you know, said, "Thanks for selecting me and letting me participate, and I learned so much and really enjoyed, um, um, the, the collaboration with the other fire departments." And the next one was, uh, from one of the team leaders from, uh, Fort St. John, uh, complimenting, uh, the Roberts Creek Crew and, uh, for their professionalism and the work that they had done. In addition, um, you know, I've highlighted some of the local fires and, uh, the training that's come back with our crews. And, uh, I think that our fire departments are much more prepared to assist with, uh, these events, given the experience they've gotten elsewhere. B.C. Wildfire Service also did request Roberts Creek to provide a standby initial attack crew in 2023 as local wildfire res, resources were deployed elsewhere or on mandatory rest time. Seashell Fire has provided this search capacity in previous seasons, however, their current apparatus was not suitable for this assignment. And I can talk on this topic for hours, um, but we'll try to keep it short. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. We have questions lined up. Great report, very interesting, very timely, much appreciated. Director Inkster.
Thanks. Just, uh, Chair, just through, through you to the presenters here. I, um, I'm happy to see the buildup of structural protection units. I've been talking about that for a couple of years now. And, uh, so I'm glad to see, I even encourage our community forests to buy, if they have the money, um, to buy as many of those units as they can. I have other concerns about the slash in our forests that I've mentioned as well, but, and how we deal with that, because that's a big concern of mine. But I'm glad to see the structural protection units, because I know that the locally-based departments are focused on property and houses, even though a forest fire will eventually get to us if we can't, um, deal with it. So, um, uh, I'm glad, I'm glad to see that we have one trailer in, I guess it sounds like it's up, um, Mason Road, um, based on this saying Seashell. And that, I don't know where the other one is. Maybe it's near the airport or something, the one that's half, but maybe it's further south, probably on the other side of the bridge. I'm assuming it, the Chapman Bridge is important to put those, in those areas. So I'm glad to see we're building that up. And I just wanted to say, um, just as a reiteration of what's happening more recently, I remember when the Seashell firefighters were first deployed in 2003, um, to Kelowna. And I remember, uh, the, I can remember, I think, the two names of the people that went. That's how big of a deal that was. I remember the names of the people that went, and I'm sure Chief Hig, Higgs remembers the, the names of the people that went. When you remember the names, that's a big deal of the individuals 21 years ago. But now, it's becoming almost annually. And so there's, there's a lot of local recognition. We saw in the reporter last year, and the departments are talking about it. But it's becoming so normalized, um, sadly. So, uh, and we're deploying trucks almost every summer to those areas. So I'm glad there's this province-wide agreement to send locals, um, up to those areas. And I'm sure it's the decision to who to send and the trucks to send is based on our local needs as well. But I'm so glad to see that we, um, work together as Canadians always to help each other. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Bax.
Well, as someone who's trained up to, uh, deployment-ready, uh, I'm willing to take questions from the rest of the board, but, uh, I'd like to move the, uh, the recommendation as it appears on page 10.
And I see a seconder. All right. Further questions? Director Lee.
Uh, thank you, Chair. It's actually not to the motion, but if I, is it okay if I ask a different question?
Sure. We've got our delegation here. Let's do that.
I'm, I'm, uh, interested in the personal turnout gear when you're doing a wildfire. It's different than what you'd do with a house, undoubtedly, right? Are, are we well-equipped for that?
Thank you for the question through the chair. I believe that we've been reinvesting back into the program. The gear that, uh, you see me wearing here is a standard issue for many of our fire departments. And that was, uh, a budget request a couple of years ago. Using some of that revenue that had come back in, I'd say reinvesting into the program and making sure that our firefighters are prepared, equipped, and trained to, uh, prepare for wildfire events.
Thank you. And I have a question, which is...
Follow up?
Oh, go ahead.
Just for Director Bax. I, uh, when I was much younger, I got to fight a forest fire the odd time when it was happening on the coast here. It is sure hot, and I couldn't imagine you in the usual gear you turn out for structure, you would melt.
Yeah.
So it's good to see you do have some stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. We all want to help when there's fires across B.C. I totally get that. I'm a little concerned as the frequency rises that some of our local volunteers might have difficulty saying no. Uh, is, is that a concern that we may be overstretching the capacity of our volunteers?
That, that's a great question. What used to be a once-in-a-career opportunity has now become multiple times a season. I think that's part of our discussion about, um, making sure our home base is covered. So if we don't have a sufficient crew to send away, or, or we've reached a point of exhaustion, we have the ability to say no, and, and we should. So that conversation comes up quite a bit, and we talk amongst the fire chiefs to make sure that, uh, we're not overstretching, uh, for that reason. They are, we're not going away for fun, we're going away for work. And they're long days, and, uh, it's up to two weeks at a time. So, uh, we're mindful of the rest and recovery that's required as part of it.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And I'd add to what, um, the chief says, that there's a bigger conversation happening about the sustainability of putting, putting the, the backbone of mostly volunteer rural fire departments into efforts, uh, like this every year. What was an exception is now becoming normal. And so through U B C M and other avenues, I expect that more conversation about the, the overall ability to bear this load across the province will be taking place in the coming years.
Absolutely. Director Bax.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on, um, the reciprocal nature of this kind of, uh, deployment that, uh, uh, we received some criticism, uh, recently, last year, from a former director about using one of our new wildfire trucks, uh, as a deployment, because the province asked us to send that. And, um, it, and it was decided that this was a, uh, the right decision for us to, uh, to help another community. And the, the turnaround for, uh, should we become in need here on the Sunshine Coast, uh, are, we would have, uh, many, many, uh, fire departments from around the province that would deploy themselves here immediately. It's a, um, it's a really, it's a, a really good example of how we can all work together to keep ourselves safe. And, and the, and the, and the departments involved are, are all, they're, they may be volunteers, but they're professionals. They're professionally trained and, uh, and they, uh, and they are constantly training. And so I just, I have to wholeheartedly support this type of, uh, reciprocal, uh, service that we do.
Thank you. Now, I had a reference, uh, a question in reference to the postseason report that's coming. Will we be looking more closely at the carrying costs for keeping reserve apparatus at that time? Because, I mean, everybody likes to have reserve capacity, but we do have to look at the bottom line. So is that when we can expect, um, an update on that, or will that be looked at as part of the budget or what's happening? Thanks.
Uh, thank you for the question. It's, the question is certainly in scope, and, um, it, I imagine it will be addressed through this postseason report, but it's also part of the, uh, annual capital plan review. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no further hands up. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question on the recommendations on page 10. All in favor? Any opposed? Not likely. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm going to call a five-minute break. We are now just about at, uh, 11 o'clock. So, uh, we'll just take, um, we'll, we'll take a short break and be back no later than 11. Welcome back to the Thursday, May 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting. And the next item up is a letter of support request from the Ocean Legacy Foundation. And Let's Talk Trash, and over to Ms. Patrow.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to request a letter of support from the board for the Ocean Legacy Foundation and Let's Talk Trash team's 2024 application to the Clean Coast, Clean Waters Provincial Funding Opportunity. This grant would allow for the removal of marine debris from shorelines in the region and reduces the cost for transportation of collected materials from the Seashell Landfill to the Ocean Plastics Recycling Facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good news story. I see Director White.
Move the recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Any further? Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I was just looking for a little clarification. Is this the, also the group that would collect styrofoam at our dump and haul it to, I guess, the interior now? And also, the second part of it is, it mentions that it might be subsidizing our island cleanup. Did I read that right as well? Sorry, Chair, through the chair.
Yes. Staff.
Thank you for the question through the chair. The group is the same group that collects the materials from the Ocean Plastics Depot that is currently at the Seashell Landfill. They aren't necess, I can't speak to exactly where the material goes, as it's their, their goal is to recycle as much as they can. So they do provide information about that on their website, that it's updated when they have new projects. So right now, they're working on the recycling of netting ropes, polypropylene plastics, but I don't have any new info about styrofoam. As for the question about subsidizing the island's cleanups, it's, I wouldn't call it a subsidize, like, there's no money exchange. This program is intended to support shoreline cleanups, which is not in scope for island's cleanup. So we share communications, as was outlined in the report. We share the messaging that the cleanup opportunity is available through them, but it's not, I wouldn't call it a subsidy.
Thank you. That was very clear. And I went to their website, and it's a great website. What a terrific organization and badly needed, unfortunately. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Certainly not. Thank you very much. I am. Yes, I'm editorializing. All right. Next item, number six, mattress transportation services contract extension. GM Rosenbaum, I believe you're on.
Thank you, Chair. The following report is requesting an extension to our contract for hauling of our mattresses to our recycling facility in Hope. We are very pleased with the current service provider, and we would like to use the extension clause in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Director White.
Move the recommendation.
I see a seconder. I don't see any hands up for questions or discussions, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? That passes. Thank you very much. Next one is mattresses again. Over to GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you very much. The purpose of the following report is contract extension for the actual processing of the mattresses that are delivered to the recycling facility. And same as with previous report, we're trying to execute the contract extension clause in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Director White.
Move the recommendation.
I see a seconder. Seeing no discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. And we can move on to the regional housing coordinator contract, which is GM Hall.
Thank you, Chair. So this, this report is in front of you because in order to execute on the board's direction to include this in the budget and complete this work, board authorization is needed because we're over $100,000. Pleased to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I am the SCRD representative on, to the Housing Action Team and the Regional Housing Monthly Meeting. And I just wanted to speak very highly of the work that our housing coordinator is doing. Right now, she is coordinating three working groups to address seniors' housing, workforce' housing, and prevention and pathways out of homelessness. She is also collaborating with the SCRD in developing a land use strategy to identify underutilized public and nonprofit land that could be used for community housing. So I think we are getting a very good value here. Director White.
You know, I have a question about the overall funds available through the MRDT that are designated for housing, and if there is, if we know if there is more in the budget. I've heard something that there might be a surplus, or that might have come up during the budget, that could possibly be put towards projects, or is just sitting there, or I don't know if the SCRD is in charge of allocating that, or if it's the Ministry of Finance. It's always been a confusing model, but I'm wondering.
Right, and Sunshine Coast Tourism is in there too. Over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. I'll do my best. So through the municipal and regional destination tax model, recipients can allocate a certain percentage to housing. I believe that there are options with that percentage, and that Sunshine Coast Tourism as the designated recipient comes to the board several, on a recurring cycle, to confirm the allocation. That allocation is provided to SCRD on an annual basis, and it is, it has to be allocated to projects that conform to a plan that the board sees typically in, I think it's November, and is approved by the province. And for the current year, the funds total approximately $110,000. And I believe are fully, sorry, I may be mixing fiscal years. We're only spending money we've already received here, and for the funds that we have received, the funds are fully allocated to firstly, this contract, and there is a portion that was used towards that regional land study that you mentioned, Chair. And that, those allocations were made through the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually would welcome a little bit of a deeper dive sometime in the future as to, because I do also find the whole allocation thing a little bit confusing. It's also tied up with how much Sunshine Coast Tourism charges for MRDT. I believe it's 2% right now, and they do have the opportunity of going to 3% sometime in the future. So there could be a conversation to be had. Director White?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is there is no surplus right now. It's been well allocated to housing initiatives. But yeah, I agree. I think we, it's helpful to get regular reporting on that situation, and I'll move the recommendation too.
Thank you. I see a mover and a seconder. I did see our CFO, who appeared briefly. I don't know if she has anything to add, but perhaps, as I said, in the run-up to budget would be the time to take a little look at this again. So, motion on the floor. I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nobody's opposed? Thank you. That passes. And now we are at the Q1 reports, and I'm going to start with infrastructure. Are there questions on this report? And thank you to staff for increasing the size of the legends in those charts so that I can actually read them now. It's very helpful. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. And understanding that this is not an infrastructure-only project, I'm wondering how we can get a bit more information on the progress of volumetric billing. I know we talked about mock billing for Pender this morning, but how, how could we see regular updates on that project?
I'll go to staff for that.
Thank you very much. The updates on that project will be included in the department updates for the community and administrative services. So, Dina, I'm not sure when CFO, when is the next?
CFO, please. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Dina.
I don't think you're...
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm having some technical issues with my cameras. So, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so as mentioned by the CAO earlier, there's intended to be a report on the late June Second Cow Committee outlining the various projects that lead up to volumetric billing, because it's not volumetric billing in and of itself. So it's going to talk about the, essentially, the order of operations to get to volumetric billing, and as identified, North and South Pender will be the first to undergo the mock billing, so we want to provide some timelines. We're actively working on that particular project, because many of the projects are really just, have just recently started. So more on that in late June.
Thank you very much. Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I was on the water replacement program, and Francis Peninsula and Panorama both have water main replacements. I was wondering if this would say they're not happening this year, or they're just happening later this year? I noticed they're not in the list of water main replacement program.
Staff?
Thank you for the question. They should have been included in the list of water main replacement programs, so I make a note of that. In terms of the actual status of the projects, we had to do some redesign of those projects too, and we're still doing it, to confirm the size of the water mains, given the fire flow situation in the area. That's delaying it a little bit, and just a meeting with staff, it will be late this year or the next year, depend, and that might depend on not as much as are we ready to do the work, but the operations of the asphalt plant, because they shut down in the winter. So if we can get it done early on, before they shut, do their winter closure, then we do the project early next year to avoid that we have an extended period where we have gravel roads instead of asphalt.
Thank you. Director Bax?
Yeah, I have a question about the item on page 32. Let me find it again. Let me find it again. There we go. Water meter installations phase three district of Seashell. It says here that 650, over 650 meters have been installed. My question is, has, what percentage of the, of the total project is that? And have there been uh, leaks found? To what extent is there leaks within those 650? So I want to, because we've been waiting on bated breath for this project to finish. As we're still at least a year away. But it'd be nice to know that it's doing the work that we intended to do, finding leaks so that we can solve this, so we can lower our, our per capita usage or per, our per day usage. So the question is, how many leaks have been found and what percentage of the whole project is 650? So I can extrapolate that number.
Bated breath.
It's just a quick calculation. It's about 15% uh, that is, that is being installed. But of course, since April 12th, uh, every day there are more going in. So uh, wouldn't be surprised if it's over 20 at the moment. What is already in the ground? These system, these, all these meters are not in our, uh, they are, all the, the information has not been processed yet and have not been included in our databases. So we're actually not able to uh, include them in our meter reads, et cetera, et cetera, yet. That will still to come. However, uh, because we installed the meters, uh, there were um, several leaks already identified and they're being addressed.
Thank you. Director Stanford.
Thank you Chair. I'm wondering if there has been any further discussions with Hopkins Water System and any movement on that. I have been getting calls from constituents concerned about maintenance levels because their volunteer maintenance staff is, there's far fewer, fewer of them. And um, they're hoping they'll be able to get support from the SCRD if anything goes wrong.
Staff, please.
Thank you for the question. We've, there has been no, as far as I'm aware, no um, recent conversations with anybody from the, from the association for, of the improvement district with SCRD staff. And um, I think the, or if the tendering process is underway or is about to be concluded for uh, for a consultant to help us with the visibility study. Thank you.
Is there an option for SCRD to be able to support or help Hopkins Landing Water Improvement District in the case of an emergency?
Staff?
Thank you very much. Um, staff have done that in the past and that will be a case-by-case scenario, I hope. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question. The province just announced an ICI consultation. And uh, this is a big problem for rural communities. I skimmed the report that the province uh, provided. And they are aware that the small volumes of institutional, commercial, and industrial recycling that we get in remote communities just is, cannot be handled by the private sector and is too expensive for uh, folks to do. So I'm wondering, especially given that we submitted a resolution to UBCM about ICI in the past, are we following up on this consultation? Is this something directors should weigh in, uh, weigh in on? Or is staff preparing to respond to the province?
Thank you very much for the question. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question yet, but I will follow up with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't want to let that one go. Now, uh, I have several hands up that may be residual. Director Lee? Okay, uh, you're on? Okay.
Well, I am, but I didn't take my hand down, so I'm probably out of order. So I'll take it down and put it back up.
In that case, Director Bax.
I took my hand down and put it back up because I wanted to talk about uh, an item on page 46, the share shed in Pender Harbor Transfer Station. Now it's an interesting story. I know that in the past, the regional district had uh, given the, the citizens of the Sunshine Coast much more opportunity to um, to, to get, to share things that we didn't want anymore at little or no cost. There used to be a spring cleanup where we would leave stuff on the side of the road once a year and people would just go by and take it. And then eventually, when there was very little left and of value, that the regional district would go around and collect it all. Now we don't do that. And then we were given a... Anyway, I just wanted to share that I, I recently was in Salmon Arm and I, that's part of the Columbia Shushwap Regional District. And they, um, they, the Columbia Shushwap Regional District is this spring sponsoring a trade, like a, a swap meet. And uh, I, there's real, a real need I've got personally. I've got tons of stuff that I don't want anymore that's still of value, but I, I don't want to throw it in the trash. And so I'm, I'm clutching at straws here, trying to figure out how can we, as a regional district, support this kind of activity of people sharing, uh, trading the things that they don't want anymore without inundating our uh, secondhand shops with, with all kinds of things? I know that most of this, most of the secondhand shops are overwhelmed. We don't have a share shed anymore. I would, and I've been told that that's because we're a bigger community that we, that we can't have a share shed anymore. But I wonder what can we do? Can we sponsor swap meets? Can we create a new share shed? Anyway, that's, that's my question.
I don't know if staff have any response to that. It sounds like this should be a community initiative. Yeah, I, I, maybe some of the nonprofits could find a way to make a little bit of money off it too. We've had clothing swaps have been very popular, but uh...
As I said, the, as I said, this Shushwap, Columbia Shushwap Regional District is sponsoring this type of activity. They're sponsoring, not organizing. I'll look into it.
Brave, brave, brave regional district. Uh, Director Lee.
Thank you Chair. I will jump ahead to the Sarah's action and we're talking about it now. I understand from visiting the dump that the share shack or the transfer station, sorry. The uh, share shack is being abused because we no longer have a minimum charge to take stuff out, which used to be a dollar, which used to show we were serious. And it did uh, stop some inappropriate behavior of people that will grab stuff for reasons other than reusing personally. And I was wondering if staff had any intention of putting that minimal charge back in to see if it would affect the be, bad behavior? By the way, it was stopped. I understand it was stopped. I don't know if that it's true or not, but because it wasn't in a bylaw to charge a dollar. So, comments on both of those?
Charging a dollar?
Thank you Chair for the question. Uh, I think the director is completely correct in the fact that we used to charge a dollar. We confirmed it wasn't in the bylaw for us to do so. We didn't have authority to do so and hence we stopped. And yes, um, the current situation could be in partly addressed by, by having some kind of fee so that there is some kind of additional uh, commit, real commitment from, from a customer that they really want the item instead of just take it all for free.
Any follow-up to that?
Would that be on a work plan to make happen or are we just in investigative stage right now?
Staff?
Thank you. It's currently not on the work plan. If, if required, it won't take a lot of work to, to, to do this, but um, and I don't, but I'm also cognizant that it might not warrant the entire bylaw amendment to include one at this point in time, to do a special amendment to the bylaw only for this one item. But if the board desires, we can do that. But otherwise, we can definitely include one in a, in the future, in the next update we do to the bylaw four or five, if the board desires to do so.
I'm wondering if Area A and staff could take this conversation offline for, in a search for solutions?
For sure. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on next to the Planning and Development Q1 Report. And Director Lee?
Sorry, I was back on page 35. The, it struck me as a little bit unusual to see um, the, the development applications in, in an Infrastructure Service Department report. I was wondering two things. I, I understand water is a big chunk of the SCRD development applications. And I'm wondering if we actually have a backlog and 2018, 19, 20 are actually hitting us in 24? Or if they are, are we catching up or falling behind, in other words, on those approvals?
Over to staff.
Thank you. Maybe there's a clarification we can add to the title of this graph and the description. These are the development related, the water system related parts of development applications from the SCRD as well as the District Seashells. So these are any applications for, there's a development or rezoning or, and there's a request made to us, what does it mean for a water system? We would like to connect to the system, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, uh, those are the development related applications that are listed here, not the entire development applications which are indeed included in the Planning and Development Infrastructure Services Report.
So just a clarification for a follow-up then. These ones are probably turned over fairly quick. In other words, we really don't have a huge backlog. We're kind of current and just dealing with them as they come in. Would I be correct in that assumption?
Thank you for the question. Some of them are already in process for some time. Usually it's because there isn't other items um, related to the development that are still in process or they continue to, to change the layout of, for example, subdivision. And every time we have to do the back and forth again and they have to re, um, we have to re-review their, uh, their designs to, to see if it, if it works or not for us. So that's why some of these applications are um, are there already for a long time. And some of these applications are, of course, currently caught into um, limited situation with the fire flow action plan that still needs to be developed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Bax. Are you on infrastructure or are we planning?
I'm, I'm ready to move on to planning. Thank you. And I just wanted to uh, give kudos to staff for the, for the way that they've put together the, the reports on the various fire departments we have. It's, it's, I've been asking for this type of layout for a year now and it seems to have happened and it looks great. And, and thank you again.
Yes, and the photos are good. I'm interested, on page 56, um, the KPMG review of our subdivision process. I'm interested in knowing whether the rural directors and/or our APCs will hear more about this and whether this was... Are the recommendations specific to the SCRD or are they more broadly applicable to Modi's processes across the province?
Uh, thank you for the question Chair. Uh, yes, there's more to come on this and I, I hesitate to speculate on the ability to extrapolate things exactly, but certainly we know that a lot of our subdivision process challenges are not unique to SCRD. Thanks.
And so we might be sharing those findings with other regional districts. Do we do that?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, there's, there is actually quite active sharing. There's an association of regional district planning managers and that network provides the, a huge benefit to all of the folks like me and like Manager Jackson who are working with the vagaries of our unique uh, system. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And finally, I noted that the OCP renewal project guiding principles will be coming to us early in Q3. I'm just wondering what there is to keep our APCs busy right now because they're chomping at the bit to get going on OCP renewal, even, even if they kind of did a structured review of the current OCPs since there's a lot of new members on most of the APCs. What, what, do we have stuff to give them?
Uh, thank you for the question. We will very soon. Uh, this project, we're now into Q2, so we're talking beyond what the scope of what's in the report. But we had our, our contractor kickoff meeting yesterday. Confirming the engagement plan is one of the first items of business. And so I, I would expect that we will have a curriculum for our APCs shortly. And this is also an opportunity to say that we have proceeded with the, the surveying of APC members as was discussed at the March workshop. And staff are in the process of analyzing the, the feedback from that. And the, the information gleaned from that can inform how we best engage with our APCs going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not see any hands-ups, so I'm going to move to Community Services Q1 Report. Do we have any questions about that one? That's, that's got the good transit stuff in it. Director Stanford.
Uh, through the chair, I'm just going to ask a general question about how the new card system is working. Is there being feedback from the community about how they like or dislike that particular, the card system? I use it. I like it. Um, I've heard comments from other passengers, but I just was interested to know what the, what they're hearing.
Thank you. Over to staff.
Thank you. And through the chair, I, I think what, I think the evidence will be in the uptake. So as we continue to track how many folks are moving to UMO cards, which will be in our quarterly reports, we'll be able to see how people are responding. But other than that, I don't, I don't have anything. Thank you.
I have been reminded that I haven't got my UMO card yet. All right. Uh, Director Bax?
Yeah, um, because I just can't leave things alone like a hornet's nest. I'd like to discuss, on page 92, we have the park signs, um, projects that are going on. And I was wondering if GM could illuminate us on what's going on in, in our, our park signs, especially our beach access signs.
Over to staff.
Thank you. Through the chair. I don't have an update for you at this time, but I'll but I'll certainly make sure that they're included in this area in our quarterly reports as we make progress on that project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I think the hands-up are residual, so going once, going twice. Ah, Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering if GM Janyan could give us an update on the Catherine Lake Road and the likelihoods of it being open this year, just so everybody's aware.
Thank you, Chair. We are in the process of developing a news release as we speak that we anticipate going out either this afternoon or tomorrow. So we're just working with the Catherine Lake operator on the details of that. But the permits that we are waiting for are going to take longer than anticipated, so we are not anticipating an opening at the park as we had originally expected. So we'll be putting that in the news release, which will go public this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we should have thought about a UBCM resolution about waiting times for permits and licenses, seeing as how that seems to be a theme today. Yeah, we -- well, yes, another futile gesture. Director Bax?
I wonder if I could ask staff for a verbal update on Cliff Gilker Park, the fields and the bridges. The field looks closed. Is the field closed?
Well, maybe an organized event.
Is the field closed?
Thank you, Chair. I believe that the Cliff Gilker sports fields is still closed as we are in the process of doing remediation. And as soon as we are able to open it, there will be a news release that goes out. We'll be working with user groups and it will be included in our quarterly report as well. In terms of the Cliff Gilker Park recovery from the floods, there will be a report coming forward to committee in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going once, going twice. Ah, Director Bax?
So there is a retaining wall on Lower Road that is collapsing slowly. Is there any news as to when the work would possibly begin on this? It has been budgeted. It's called -- yeah.
The bulge.
The bulge. I didn't name it that.
Thank you, Chair. I believe you're referring to the Lower Road retaining wall. Yes, there's been a budget approved for that. Staff are actively working on it, but we are waiting for a response from Modi right now because that is in Modi Road of way -- right-of-way. So their approval is required on any design. So as well, we will provide those updates in the quarterly report as they come forward, but I don't have an update on it at this point in time, other than it's an active project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we were going twice, three times. Okay, I'm going to move to a declaration of going in camera, that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91K and 92B of the community charter. Moved, seconded, all in favor. Thank you very much. We may now move in camera. Right, any questions? I beg your pardon, I was reminded, and we have nobody in either the real or the virtual gallery. Are we ready to go in camera, or do we need a short break?
Thank you very much. And we are wrapping up the Thursday, May the ninth, two thousand and twenty four Committee of the whole meeting. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Moved seconded, all in favor. Thank you. We are adjourned.